The stream is starting, so it should be about 15 seconds. Now live.
Good evening and welcome to the May 4th meeting of the Common Council of the City of Richmond, Indiana. Will the clerk please hold the roll?
Doug Goss.
Here.
Kelly Cruz Nicholson.
You have to unmute yourself, Kelly, or I can do it.
She can't.
She can't.
Okay, okay, I will do it.
Kelly Cruz Nichols.
She said yes.
Bill Engels.
Here.
Jeff Kappa.
Kate Neers, Kelly.
Jeff Locke.
Here.
Gary Turner.
Here.
Ron Oler.
Here.
Jane Bumblelow.
Here.
And Larry Parker.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Your packer was a minute, so our last regular meeting of April 20th, 2020.
Mr. President.
Mr. Parker.
There are no additions or corrections. I move for approval of April 20th minutes as received.
Second.
The motion is second to approve the minutes of the last regular meeting of April 20th, 2020. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minister approved. Thank you. Communications for the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President.
The mayor may not see him on TV because of where he's located.
Yeah, I'm down here. The city of Richmond, in partnership with Center City Development Corporation, and of course with the blessing of counsel this evening, will be awarded $250,000 by the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs through their COVID-19 response program. I'm going to unpack this just a little bit for our citizens who are watching, if the council members here. On April 1st, Okra announced the COVID-19 Response Program. This is a $10.7 million program aiming to provide relief, funding the counties, cities, and towns across Indiana as they deal with the economic impact of COVID-19. Communities were encouraged to provide a letter of interest and display how they would utilize the funds within the next three months to aid in recovery. The maximum allowable amount was set to $250,000 per community. The City of Richmond and Center City Development Corporation joined together in a letter of interest that was submitted on April 14th, after which a full application was requested, and this application laid out the details of the Richmond COVID-19 Response Grant Program and included the program documents such as an evaluation process and eligibility criteria outline and a method to disperse up to $10,000 per business by June 1st. So we have tentatively been awarded that dollar amount of purse that comes before council tonight with other COVID-related relief opportunities, and I just want to take this opportunity to thank everyone on this team that was involved in that. It was a lot of work. Thank everyone at Center City Development Corporation and thank all the members of council for your partnership in this as well. We want to do everything we can to provide relief funding as we move forward and get things open back up. That is all I have, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Any other questions for Mayor? No? All right, ordinances on first reading. Do I have a motion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Parker.
I'd like to move that we read by title only, ordinance number 28, 2020, 29, 2020, and 30, 2020.
Second.
Second.
Have a motion and second to suspend the rules and read by title only. Ordinance is on first reading, 28, 2020, 29, 2020, and 30, 2020. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Propose, not ordinance on first reading.
Ordinance, pardon? Oh, ordinance number 28, 2020, an appropriation ordinance authorizing the submittal acceptance and appropriation of a grant from the Indiana Department of Transportation.
Beth, are you speaking on this?
Yeah. Thank you. The Coronavirus Act awarded funding to transit agents throughout the state a formula that they had based on operations. The City of Richmond has been awarded up to $1,561,464 for transit operations. This funding will be available from July 1st through December 31st of 2021. So it is an 18-month period that this funding will be available. Based on our operations and the expenses that we have during that time period, we will be able to draw these funds which are an additional to our regular budget that we will have coming before you shortly.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Locke, this ordinance is on first reading, but I believe finance committee already discussed it, right?
Finance committee has met tonight and recommends approval and requests the suspension of rules to read just on three readings.
Okay. Is that a motion to suspend the rules and move to second?
So move it.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to suspend the rules, advance ordinance 28, 2020 to second reading, public comment. By title only, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 28, 2020, and appropriation ordinance authorizing the submittal acceptance and appropriation of a grant from the Indiana Department of Transportation.
This meeting is being recorded, and attendees we have on the side are for other ordinances coming up. Clerk, did we have any comments or emails?
I didn't get anything today.
People wanting to talk about these ordinances?
No one contacted me.
Anybody else have any calls or emails about this?
Move for engrossment.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to engross ordinance 28, 2020. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance is engrossed.
Mr. President.
Ms. Parker.
Move to suspend the rules and read ordinance 28, 2020 for third and final reading. Read by title only.
Second.
Motion and a second to suspend the rules and advance ordinance 28, 2020 to third and final reading by title only. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance on third reading.
Ordinance number 28, 2020, an appropriation ordinance authorizing the submittal acceptance and appropriation of a grant from the Indiana Department of Transportation.
Any final comments for council? I thank the city for working on this grant and some of the others coming up. This will make a huge difference, as we know, likely have some shortfalls later this year when we see taxes come in and not come in. So this will definitely help. Clerk call roll.
Doug Goss.
Aye.
Kelly Cruz Nicholson.
Aye.
Bill Engels.
Aye.
Jeff Kappa.
All right.
Jeff Locke.
Aye.
Gary Turner.
All right.
Jane Bumblelow.
Aye.
Larry Parker.
Aye.
And Ron Oler.
Aye.
All are in favor.
Ordinance passes, thank you.
Ordinance number 29, 2020, an appropriation ordinance authorizing the submittal acceptance and appropriation of a grant from the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs.
This is the Okra grant the mayor was talking about. Beth, are you speaking to this?
Yeah. Just kind of to recap, the mayor said this is an opportunity to assist businesses with a grant of up to $10,000. That grant can be used for operations, it can be used to support remote work, or it can be used to support any of their expenditures as they are making sure that their business is ready to reopen and to move forward.
And this will be managed with the Center City Development Corporation, but there'll be members of council and members of the city administration also on the committee to help go through the applicants, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Parker.
As last time, I'd like to abstain from voting on this particular break because I'm on the sixth seat.
Your fellow counselor, Jeff Kappa, wants to abstain from voting on this. We need to vote. Do I have a motion to accept his abstention? Yes, sir. Have a motion and a second. Locke and Goss have a motion and a second to accept his abstention. Who gets the record? All in favor say aye.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Yes, Mr. Parker.
I didn't hear why. I can't, I couldn't hear him very well.
He serves on the city center board that's going to be managing the grant.
Thank you.
He's a voted member of the board, so things is perceived as conflict of interest.
Thank you.
And he will not be on the committee that helps choose the grant recipients.
Perfect.
So ordinance on first reading now. Okay, any other questions for Beth? Do we have a motion to move? Have a motion to...
You have a vote in general, right?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, we need to vote on travel staying. We can hear that. All in favor of Jeff Kappa abstaining, say aye.
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 Kappa abstaining? No. Kappa may abstain. Thank you. Okay, now for...
Mr. President.
Mr. Goss.
I move that we suspend the rules and advance ordinance 29, 2020 to second reading. Read by title only.
Second.
Motion and a second to suspend the rules and advance ordinance 29, 2020 to second reading, final, title only. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Ordinance is on second reading, public comment. I don't see anyone logged in. Do we have any emails or communications on any constituents regarding this ordinance? None?
Move for engrossment.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second to engross ordinance 29, 2020. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance is engrossed.
Mr. President.
Mr. Goss.
I move that we suspend the rules and advance ordinance 29, 2020 to third and final reading. Read by title only.
Second.
Motion and a second to suspend the rules and advance ordinance 29, 2020 to third and final reading by title only. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None?
Ordinance number 29, 2020, appropriation ordinance authorizing the submittal acceptance and appropriation of a grant from the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs.
Any further comments from council? No. Thank you, Beth, for working on this. I know it's, you've gone back and forth quite a bit. Thank you for the CCDC willing to take this on. And hopefully we'll be able to help out since all businesses in our community are struggling right now. Clerk call roll.
Doug Goss.
Aye.
Kelly Cruz Nicholson.
Aye.
Bill Engel.
Aye.
Jeff Locke.
Aye.
Gary Turner.
Aye.
Jane Bumblelow.
Aye.
Larry Parker.
Aye.
And Ron Oler.
Aye.
Any are in favor? Much, Gary?
Ordinance passed, thank you.
Ordinance number 30, 2020, an appropriation ordinance authorizing the submittal acceptance and appropriation of a grant from the Federal Aviation Administration.
Are you speaking to this, Beth?
Yes. Yes, this also is a CARES Act allocation that is a formulaic distribution to municipal airports throughout the state of Indiana. The City of Richmond was awarded $30,000 for operations at the Richmond Municipal Airport. We have submitted the grant application and been approved to receive the $30,000.
Beth and I were on a chamber Zoom meeting two weeks ago with Senator Young. We talked about this.
Yes.
Airports around the state, how much money was being distributed to help the shortfall.
Yes.
So it doesn't sound like a lot, but for our little airport, it will definitely help. Any questions for that?
Mr. President.
Ms. Goss.
I move that we suspend the rules and advance ordinance 30, 2020 to second reading. Read by title only.
Second.
Motion and a second to suspend the rules and advance ordinance 30, 2020 to second reading by title only. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Second reading.
Ordinance number 30, 2020, an appropriation ordinance authorizing the submittal acceptance and appropriation of a grant from the Federal Aviation Administration.
No one else is on here. Clerk, did you receive any emails or phone calls about this? Did anyone else? Any other comments from constituents?
No.
Move for engrossment.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to engross ordinance 30, 2020. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No.
Mr. Goss.
Mr. Goss.
I move that we suspend the rules and advance ordinance 30, 2020 to third and final reading. Read by title only.
Second.
Second.
Promotion and second to suspend the rules and advance ordinance 30, 2020 to third and final reading by title only. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Ordinance on third reading.
Ordinance number 30, 2020, an appropriation ordinance authorizing the submittal acceptance and appropriation of a grant from the Federal Aviation Administration.
Any further comments from council? Like the others, I appreciate the city's willingness to work on this to get these funds to help out the airport. Clerk call roll.
Doug Goss.
Aye.
Kelly Cruz Nicholson.
Aye.
Bill Engel.
Aye.
Jeff Kappa.
Aye.
Jeff Locke.
Aye.
Gary Turner.
Aye.
Jane Bumblelow.
Aye.
Larry Parker.
Aye.
And Ron Oler.
Aye.
All are in favor.
Thank you. Ordinance is on second.
Ordinance number 21, 2020, a special ordinance authorizing the approval of a statement of benefits for a property owner applying for deductions under Indiana Code 6-1-12.1.
Listen to it. Tax abatement request for element 13, methco metals, will sit to the tax abatement committee due diligence. And I believe we've done that. Mr. Goss, do you have a report?
Yes. This tax abatement is for element 13. It is a request for 10 years at 90%, which is our alternative abatement. The total investment is 19.5 million for all three of these ordinances. The ordinance 21, 22, and 23 are all for the same element 13. The investment exceeds the 15 million requirement. It will create 30 full-time jobs. Wages are at least two and a half times the minimum. They will offer major medical and all the improvements in equipment and everything will be in place within the next three years. This is the tax payments committee's recommendation that we approve all three ordinances.
We have some representatives of element 13. I don't know if I can allow all of them to talk at the same time. I'm going to try here.
There we go.
Why is Valerie still muted?
Hi, Ron.
So we should have Chris, Mike, Josh, and now Valerie's unmuted too. So whoever wants to speak from element 13, go right ahead.
Leon Casaroff?
Yes. Go ahead, Chris.
Leon, I was, I'm sorry, I was looking for Leon. Is Leon on there?
He was, but now he's gone.
He's at the bottom.
Oh, sorry, there he is. Leon, Leon.
Got him muted.
Standby.
How's that? Can you hear me now?
So now Leon should be unmuted.
There we go.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We just want to express how happy we are to be locating our new operation in Richmond. We think it's a terrific community. We've been very pleased with the people that we've met with and interacted with, and we look forward to a long future and growth in the community.
All right, thank you. Valerie, do you want to say something about this?
Yes, I've had the pleasure at the Economic Development Corporation of working with the ownership team and their consultants since the early fall, and they are in the process of acquiring approximately 15 and a half acres in our Midwest industrial park just southeast of Blue Buffalo on the corner of Round Barn and Gar Jackson Road. The EDC will be reviewing and hopefully approving that real estate purchase agreement at our next board meeting on May the 11th. And the company is intending to build between a 50 and 60,000 square foot manufacturing plant. They're still finalizing all of the details of the footprint of the building. But with that, as Doug said, we're very appreciative that this project will result in 30 full-time jobs at an average hourly wage of $20.55 an hour. And in addition to the tax abatement, the EDC board will also be considering an edit grant as well.
All right, very good. Chris and Mike, do you want to add to that?
Chris, go ahead, or I can talk.
Go ahead, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I, just to echo what Leon said, we're really excited about Richmond and Valerie's been wonderful to work with, and it's, it's just a great opportunity and a win-win for everyone. Hopefully, Ron, I don't know if you distributed some of the pictures and the video from last week of what we will do there, making aluminum billets for the extrusion industry. But if you guys have questions about that or what we'll be doing, we could certainly answer those. But yes, we're really excited about it.
Okay, this is on second reading and public comment. Did anybody have any communications from citizens about this, constituents about this? No. The video is referred to, it was just YouTube, it wasn't their plant because it doesn't exist yet. It was another similar plant. It was good.
Correct.
So Doug's on the board, and honestly, you know, Mike looked like, sort of. Any questions for Chris, Mike, or Valerie, or Leon, or anyone? Okay, this, on second reading, we have no other public comments.
Move for engrossment.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to engross ordinance 21, 2020. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance is engrossed.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Goss.
I move that we suspend the rules and advance ordinance 21, 2020 to third and final reading. Read by title only.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and advance ordinance 21, 2020 to third and final reading. Read by title only. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Chris.
I have a, I had someone send me a request. Can you expand a little bit on element 13?
Doug, Mike, do you want to handle that?
Sure. And that question was from Kelly?
Yes.
Kelly, we will be building an aluminum remelter that will produce aluminum billets, which are essentially logs of aluminum in various diameters, seven, eight inch, that those, that, that'll be the final product. We sell those to aluminum, aluminum extruders, make things like, they make it into shapes. So think about the high school bleachers.
Okay.
Those, those types of things.
Okay.
Does that give you a good enough idea?
Yeah, yeah, that's good. Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
In your area, their purchasing is already some industrial, correct, Valerie?
Yes, yes, all the appropriate zoning is in place. I took a trip along with Sarah Mitchell at the EDC as well as a local banker and a local contractor and met Mike and Chris down at a similar plant in Bowling Green, Kentucky to view the operation and make sure that it aesthetically fit into our industrial park. I will say it's a very clean operation. I was very impressed with the facility. It's very high-tech nature, and so we walked away without any concerns about the proposed development in Richmond.
Very good. Thank you, Valerie. Any further questions or comments? From...
Mr. President.
I'm sorry, yes, Ms. Engel.
Do we still get, isn't it the, the form SB1 that lists the hourly wage, et cetera, et cetera? I looked in my packet and I couldn't find that anywhere.
It was sent separately, and Doug and I got it. I don't know who else got it. But not everybody else got it, so they didn't get a text message. Do we want to hold this under? Somebody has a chance to look at it?
I don't think so. That's, that's not my concern. I just want to make sure we see those in the future.
Yes, I don't know why they didn't, they didn't come from the clerk's office this time. Well, it came separate.
Yeah, well, because I didn't have them.
It just went to the tax abatement chairperson. It didn't go to everyone this time for some reason.
Mr. Chair. Tax abatement.
We will make sure that that happens in the future. Normally that would have came from infrastructure and development, I believe, through the clerk's office.
Okay, I'd like to see that, yeah.
Dr. Oler.
Yes.
Those aren't distributed from the law office because there is some proprietary information with the equipment list, so those are not distributed to the clerk's office for public information due to the public record. So that's why it was sent separately to the tax abatement committee so that they could then share with their fellow counselors.
Yes, I see that now because there's some, I've never seen before on this one, so yes, proprietary. Just don't take that, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Eric, is there a problem with holding it on third into the next meeting so that we can see that information?
I don't know. That, that would be May...
18.
18.
I'm just asking, is there, is there a point that we need to reach, or is this something where it can hold for two weeks?
The EDC is going to vote to sell its property on May 11th.
Okay.
If we held it, it would probably hold up the EDC's vote of June.
Okay. Okay.
It's already in the group.
It's already in the group.
It's already in the group, yeah. Yeah, it's already in the group. It's already on third reading too, isn't it?
Okay.
We're ready, we're ready for a vote. Clerk call roll.
Yes, sir. Doug Goss.
Aye.
Kelly Cruz Nicholson.
Aye.
Bill Engel.
Aye.
Jeff Kappa. Gary Turner.
Aye.
Jane Bumblelow.
Aye.
Larry Parker.
Aye.
And Ron Oler.
Aye. Thank you.
Ordinance number 22, 2020, a special ordinance authorizing the approval of a statement of benefits for a property owner applying for deductions under Indiana Code 6-1-12.1.
This is the second tax abatement ordinance for element 13. Mr. Goss?
Again, this is a 10-year, 90%. This investment amount is 13.2 million for the manufacturing equipment. Tax abatement committee recommends approval.
Any questions? On the manufacturing equipment side? No, this is on second reading. Anybody get any comments? Okay.
Move for engrossment.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to engross ordinance 22, 2020. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed?
Mr. President.
Mr. Goss.
I move that we suspend the rules and advance ordinance 22, 2020 to third and final reading. Read by title only.
Second.
Promotion and second to suspend the rules and advance ordinance 22, 2020 to third and final reading. Read by title only. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. And during the due diligence phase for this manufacturing equipment, did confirm that it's all the equipment. So it's able to be debatable. Clerk call roll.
Ordinance number 22, 2020, a special ordinance authorizing the approval of a statement of benefits for a property owner applying for deductions under Indiana Code 6-1.1-12.1 with alternative abatement deduction schedule.
Any other comments? Clerk call roll.
Doug Goss.
Aye.
Kelly Cruz Nicholson.
Aye.
Bill Engel.
Aye.
Jeff Kappa.
Aye.
Jeff Locke.
Aye.
Gary Turner.
Aye.
Jane Bumblelow.
Aye.
Larry Parker.
Aye.
All are in favor.
Thank you.
Ordinance number 23, 2020, a special ordinance authorizing the approval of a statement of benefits for a property owner applying for deductions under Indiana Code 6-1.1-12.1 with alternative abatement deduction schedule.
This is the third abatement for element 13. Mr. Goss?
Yes, this one is for IT equipment, therefore it'll only be for five years, 90%, with an estimated investment of $100,000. And the tax abatement committee recommends approval.
Okay. This ordinance is on public comment. Did anyone see any questions or comments from constituents? No, none?
Move for engrossment.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to engross ordinance 23, 2020. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None?
Mr. President, Mr. Goss. I move that we suspend the rules and advance ordinance 23, 2020 to third and final reading. Read by title only.
Second.
Promotion and second to suspend the rules and advance ordinance 23, 2020 to third and final reading by title only. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance on third reading.
Ordinance number 23, 2020, a special ordinance authorizing the approval of a statement of benefits for a property owner applying for deductions under Indiana Code 6-1.1-12.1 with alternative abatement deduction schedule.
Any further comments by council? Clerk call roll.
Doug Goss.
Aye.
Kelly Cruz Nicholson.
Aye.
Bill Engel.
Aye.
Jeff Kappa.
Aye.
Jeff Locke.
Aye.
Gary Turner.
Aye.
Jane Bumblelow.
Aye.
Larry Parker.
Aye. Aye.
All are in favor.